Mayor Howley?
Here.
Mrs. Crowe, here. Mrs. D'Angelo, here. Mr. Duffy?
Here.
Mr. Foyle?
Here.
Mr. Raimino?
Here.
Mrs. Robert Rogers?
Here.
Mr. Altrino?
Here.
Mr. Winslow?
Here.
Superintendent Smith?
Here.
Superintendent Cassavian?
Here.
Superintendent Sullivan?
Here.
Ms. Oliver? Student Representative Caitlin Abber?
Yes.
Thank you. The first order of business is the approval of minutes for the regular session of March 23, 2009. Mr. Altrino so moves, a second by Ms. Crowe. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Second portion is public comment. Now is the time for anyone in the audience to address the committee on any of tonight's topics on the agenda. Try that again. See if there's a little button on us.
There's a switch on the mic.
Hello. Good. Okay. My name's Caitlin Abber. I'm speaking as a Malden Public student, but I'm also a student representative from Malden High School. And I just wanted to speak on behalf of the Tech Ed Department at Malden High School about the recent talk about cutting some of the department. Um, I think that a lot of the focus in Malden High School is put on college and the future for students to go to college, and not enough is focused on the children and the students who aren't going to college, who maybe want to take another path like the world of work. And the Tech Ed Department is perfect for that. And I know that there's a, the VOC, but not all students get accepted into the VOC, so that Malden High School has the option for them to still pursue their dream of going into the world of work for technology and shop. And I think that if we cut the Tech Department, it would be neglecting the students of other possibilities besides college, because not every student is made for college, not every student can afford college, and I think that we need to appreciate that and keep the shops in Malden High School. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment portion is still open. Anyone else would like to address the committee that summarizes the position of a lot of people in the audience, we'll take that under advisement. Comrade Ed, could you give us your name and address, please?
My name is Edward Jones. I live in 95 Home Street in Malden. Um, I'm an ex-student of Malden High.
Can we just pull that microphone up a little bit?
Yep. As a Malden High student, I had a lot of trouble in curricular schoolwork and all that, and I think Malden High Auto Shop really helped me a great deal, helped me stay focused. Mr. Bazanotti was definitely a positive influence in my life. Now I'm ASE certified mechanic on a right track. I'm working forty-plus hours a week, and it was just a great experience for any person who is not staying in college or going to college, someone who looks to be, I wouldn't say an outcast, but someone who wants to take another route, as opposed to just staying in college, and it's definitely a positive reinforcement, too. It's not just, oh, you're going to that for just going there. It's, I can go let loose for an hour for my curricular activities and then learn something new and then go back to my curricular activities. Thank you. Have a nice.
Thank you.
Jeff Murphy, 28 Fox Street, Malden. Um, just like I say, I, when I started my high school career, I started at Malden Catholic. Was gonna go to college. I didn't do too well there. In 2000, I left. I came back to Malden High in 2002 to finish my high school career. And the only reason I ever even got my high school diploma was because of the shops. I took Mr. Baz's Auto Shop, Mr. Murphy's Wood Shop, since gone on to work as a contractor and independent insurance adjuster. And I think I've done pretty well for myself, and just want to say that I wouldn't be standing where I am today without Malden High Shops. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, Adam Weldy, 97 Hill Street. Um, I'm just here today to speak on behalf of myself, on behalf of all the people behind me wearing the SOS pins, and on behalf of all the people who these programs affect. Um, I think it's important for us to make sure, and I urge the committee, to craft a budget that reflects the needs of all of our students here in our city. We are a comprehensive high school, and I think it's very interesting that around the same time that the high school principal will advertise the amount of colleges that people have been accepted to into Harvard, into MIT, into places like Tufts, that we're also cutting programs that benefit students on the other end of the spectrum. And I think it's important to remember that the pendulum swings in both directions. Thank you very much.
How you doing? My name is Joseph Saracini, 1216 Felsway. I graduated '04 and I'm currently an unlicensed electrician, but in the field, the mechanics that I was taught allowed me to, you know, climb the ladder in the field that I was in, and even, and sometimes, like, you know, times like now have allowed me to see, to gain money from doing mechanical work aside from electrical. Basically what I'm saying is that, you know, in times of need, you should have every possible angle that you can, and taking that away from the public school systems probably diminish it a lot, and that's how I feel.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Lawrence Corden, 30 Barrett Street, Malden High School, class of 2003. Um, I wanted to express my opinion that I think the Voc Ed program at Malden High School not only is a vital part of high school, but I think it's one that is needed. I think that the emphasis of Malden High School being a college prep school is a positive thing. It's a good thing for the city and for the students, and ideally, everyone should go to, you know, a four-year school and get a degree, wear a shirt and tie every day to work and make a lot of money. That's a good thing. But then you also need to be, need to recognize all the blue collar aspect of it, you know, people that are mechanics and plumbers, electricians, those type of jobs, not only support the city itself, but the country as a whole, and, you know, those are the type of jobs that can't be outsourced to India and Pakistan. You know, you need someone to work on your car or to fix your sink, and I think that the emphasis of Malden High School should remain, not only college prep, which is a positive thing, but also, you know, one that's focused on blue collar fields and trades, because this area, especially in Malden, where you have a lot of housing boom in this city, a lot of apartment building of Malden Square, they built this massive building. Well, the kids, the people that built that building were trade school kids in high school. Plumbers, electricians, carpenters, people that went to woodshop, plumbing shop, welding, those people are needed, and you can't, you know, learn everything you need to learn to run a city or an economy in the classroom sitting at a desk. Um, myself, I was in the Voc Ed program, didn't have a clear path after high school. I went, went for further education in the automotive field. Started out as a mechanic, making, you know, nine bucks now, changing oil, rotating tires, that kind of stuff, and, you know, four years later, I'm at the same dealership, and I'm assistant manager now. I'm running the service department, dealing with customers, I'm responsible for all the accounts payable and receivable for my company, and I started out as a job kid. You know, my MCAS score, I took the MCAS math test three times, failed it twice, and now I'm doing accounting for my company. And so I think that there needs to be a recognition by the city council, by the school committee, not only that, that blue collar trades are necessary, but are worth investing in, because not everybody in this room, not everybody in the high school is gonna go on to Harvard, MIT, or Tufts, or other big business schools. And I think that, you know, you need to look at the people that live in Malden and make the right decision based on the needs of the city and also the desires of the students and the citizens. You know, think back to yourselves and think of what, you know, what you did for a living before you set up at this podium. Did you ever deliver papers, or reconstruction? Did you do anything with your hands? Not everything is just wear a shirt and tie every day. I'm fortunate that I'm able to do that, because of the opportunities I had from Malden High School, not only in the Voc Ed program, but also business management classes. You know, Malden High School has a very good spectrum of learning possibilities, and I think to do away with one aspect of that just because you get your hands dirty while you're doing it, I think would be a mistake for the students and of course, the city of Malden. Thank you.
Felicia Goycari, 109 Summer Street. It's a common misconception that Tech Ed isn't gonna benefit you for a four- or six-year scholar, like college, and for that field, and that it'll only help you in something like automotive or woodworking. And a few months ago, I was really quite convinced that I wasn't even gonna make it to college, but I feel like being in woodshop this year has helped me with a sense of math, which I've constantly struggled with, and a sense of logic, and it also helps me with all of my other classes, and it's nice to have somewhere to go, to know that I'm working on a project and that I'm going to achieve something, which I feel like everybody in the school needs, and I know that Tech Ed is a very important part of the school and the community.
I'm Warren Watson. I live at 104 Way Street. Um, I'm a freshman right now. I'm the vice president of my freshman class, and I know that last year, when it became time to choose my classes, the very first class that I checked off was Tech Ed, because I know that I enjoy going down and working with wood and work with my hands, as a lot of other kids do. And it, um, it just, it opens our eyes more to the world around us, and it shows us more of what we can accomplish and other things that we could do. It gives us more hands-on experience on, um, like, it opens our eyes to other things that are out there if you're not, not that good at academics. Like, I know that, um, for me, my favorite classes are woodshop and English class, not because of the academics or what we're doing, but because of the teachers, and woodshop, it's more of what, like, what we actually get to do and, like, the feel of the classroom. It's like, it's a very homey environment. We get to go down there, and we have a really good time with what we're doing. We always learn, every day we learn something new, and it's a very great class, and it really should not be cut. Thank you.
Hi, Anthony Elvers, 112 Mill Street. Just want to say that shop class is definitely a new experience. Not only do the shop teachers treat us as adults, but they give us a feel of what the work life is like. If there was an error, they're always right there by our side, tell us, listen, this is how it's done. You know, they always help us out. Always looked up to, as, always looked up to the tech teachers as basically like athlete coaches. They're always there to encourage you, do better. Um, I enjoyed being in shop classes, not only because it gave me different options of what I can do in life, um, all the projects we got to do were fun. It also taught us how to work as a team with everybody in the class, because that's basically what the world, uh, work world's like, gotta work with different people. Just, shop teachers are great. They're always there for us, they take their time, help us, really explain everything down to real basics to even more advanced stuff. And, um, basically, they, um, showed kids that, um, they have different options in life, you know, whether it's wood, automotive, graphic designs, metal shop. And, uh, it's just, there's so much out there, not only about, you know, schoolwork, not only with social studies, math, English, you know, there's also work that needs to be done by hand, you know, as in, like, plumbing, sheet metal work, automotives, and carpentry. And I feel that if you get rid of the shops, a lot of kids are gonna be disappointed, not only they're not gonna be able to experience different options of what they will have in the future, but it, um, it just gives them a whole different feel of what the, you know, what the real world's like, too. Thank you.
Nick Correnti, 204 Adams Street. Um, I'm not here to talk about myself. I mean, I graduated, cutting the shops, honestly, doesn't really affect me too much, but, uh, I feel bad for the kids in seventh, eighth grade looking to come to high school, you know, don't know what they're gonna do with the rest of their lives, you know, they aren't gonna have the chance to go out, you know, visit other programs besides just history and English, go to college. I mean, without the tech teachers, I mean, obviously, I wouldn't be where I am today. I'm an AC certified technician, twenty years old, I mean, I have an awesome career. I can honestly say that, you know, going through a four-year college, it's awes- you know, awesome for some people, nothing against it, but, uh, you know, for some of the people out here, and, you know, it's not, it's not being fair to the kids that haven't even had the chance to visit some of these other shops, but, uh, you know, we shouldn't be cutting the shops, we should be adding on to the shops, people should be experiencing, you know, other ways in the field. It's not all just black and white, go to college, graduate, get a great job, because that's not how the world is. So, that's all I gotta say.
Hi, my name is Robert Armstrong. I live at 31 John Street. I'm a part of the class of 2003, Malden High. I know for a lot of people, the proper way to get to college is to take a lot of academic classes, English, math, calculus in school, but for me, I didn't really think about that much when I was in high school. So, a few years ago, I decided I wanted to go to college, and the way I'm doing it is I joined the Navy. The Navy will pay for my college, and the part of the Navy I joined was the Seabees, Construction Battalion. Everything that I learned in school, I already knew from Malden High Auto Shop. Uh, I graduated top of my class in California, and I was able to help the thirteen other people in my class that graduated with me, a lot more, because I was in Malden High Auto. Um, that's it. Thank you.
Evening. Matt Dossi, class of '03. I am the warehouse manager and technician for Colonial Saw Company, the North American distributor for Lamella glue systems and straight big vertical panel saws. Uh, basically, without the knowledge that my father, being a master carpenter and what I learned in Mr. Murphy's woodshop, I would still be serving tables and scooping ice cream for friendlies right now, instead of having a well-paying job for forty hours plus, full benefits, I wouldn't have that opportunity. Not everyone wants to be doctors, accountants, and some of the thing about accountants, doctors, lawyers, didn't build the house, is that you guys and ladies live in. Thank you.
Justin Patterson from 685 Broadway. I'm currently a senior at high school, and I built this guitar for my senior project and entered it in the Boston Globe's Galactic Art Awards and won a gold key. It's the highest award you can win for a single entry into the competition, and without the help of Jeff Murphy and other students and the other teachers in the Tech Ed programs, I wouldn't have been able to be recognized for my talent, or possibly in high school, because in eighth grade, I tried to apply to the vocational school and didn't get in, and when I didn't get in, I was thinking about either dropping out and joining Job Corps or another program similar to it, but in my freshman year, after taking Tech Ed, I decided to stay in. So I have to say, thank you.
Public comment portion is still open?
Hi, I'm Hannah, and I come from the Salamwood School, and, um, I disagree with shutting down the consumer ed program, because it really means a lot to me, and, um, Ms. Moretti is one of my favorite teachers, and, um, I learned many recipes that, like, I didn't know about, so it actually will help kids who will become mothers in the future know how to cook and stuff like that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's James Gardner from 19 Salem Place. Uh, before high school, I didn't fit into anything. I met Baz at six schools under one roof. He taught me, he showed me about the auto shop, went in freshman year. A whole new life opened around me. I fit in with so many new people. I actually might be getting a job soon at a big dealership, Chevrolet Davidson, so without them, I wouldn't be where I am today. Thank you.
Um, my name's Clebert from 27 Spruce Street. Um, I'd like to say that, um, thanks to the auto shop, it influenced my decision with, um, choosing the right career, and right now, I'm pursuing the automotive technology to get a degree. Um, that's what I feel most comfortable with. Thanks to Mr. Baz, I got to learn the basics. Even, um, right now, even in, um, my school, the teacher, the professors say that it is like a necessity to have, like, technical classes in high school, because most of the kids who came to my school didn't have the chance, they couldn't get into VOCs, so, and some public schools didn't offer it, like, um, Malden High. So thanks to Malden High, I got, um, to be a step ahead of other people, and I don't want, um, some of these kids who are coming up from eighth grade not to have that chance also, so they can have a better understanding when they go on into the career and have a better chance of choosing. It helps them a whole lot. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Diana Joseph. Um, I live on 48 Broden Street, and I'm here to speak on behalf of, um, the cooking and sewing teachers at the middle schools, and, um, I just feel that, like, like, when I was at the Salamwood, like, I, I used to really enjoy cooking and sewing, because it was just that class that, like, you get away from everything else, and it wasn't just like work and, like, writing and everything, and I just, I feel that it's unjust for the kids that are coming next year to, like, not be able to have those classes, because, like, it's, it's just that class that you can go to and just, like, not be doing work and you could have fun, like, and I know that, like, like, I know, like, for my little sister, she's interested in that kind of stuff, and, like, she won't be able to, like, if she's not able to have that class next year, I just feel that it's really unjust. And, like, for, um, Ms. Moretti at the Salamwood, like, I had her a long time ago, and then now I'm, I'm like a new member of the National Auto Society at Malden High School, and, like, I, I didn't know what to do for my project, and I went back to her, and she was able to help me and everything, so I just feel like, like, those kind of teachers, it's like, it's not only that, like, they put a lot of work into what they do, it's just they're a huge help all around. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Michael Miranda, 30 Silver Street. Um, I started out high school at Malden Catholic freshman year, didn't like it, wasn't really into academic stuff. I transferred over sophomore year to Malden High School. Um, first thing I chose was Tech Ed. Cards have been my first love. Bazanotti helped me with the basics, I understood a lot more. I went on to college to pursue it, got a lot more knowledge, but I don't think I would have had a jumpstart without Mr. Bazanotti here. It's a great opportunity for kids to take Tech Ed shops, woodshop, metal shop, auto shop, whatever shop they like. The VOC isn't an easy school to get into. I originally applied to that before I applied to Malden Catholic. I didn't get into the classes I wanted to, and that's pretty much all I gotta say.
Thank you. Public comment portion is still open?
Hello, my name is Malika. I'm a mental health counselor, and I used to work at the Salamwood School as a teacher ed. Um, I had the opportunity to work with Ms. Moretti as her assistant, especially with the students who do not speak English, I mean, ESL teachers, ESL students. Um, based on my experience, um, I think that the students really learned a skill, you know, from the cooking classes and the sewing classes, too. So, um, I really appreciate that if the program can stay open, and, um, you know, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment still open. Don't miss your chance if you've come all the way down, if you want something to say. Otherwise, we'll consider that portion of the meeting closed. We thank you all for taking the time and effort to come down and address the committee of, on a topic of concern to you. Thank you very much. We'll move on. Item number three, student achievement, and item number four, superintendent's reports. We'll hear from the superintendent on both of those topics.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, first of all, I want to highlight some particular accomplishments on the part of a number of our students, uh, over the course of the past month. Uh, first, a note from the high school, Junior Sam Wharton and sophomore Jenna Delaney were selected to have their original plays staged as part of the Massachusetts Young Playwrights Festival at Boston University's Playwright Theater with professional actors and professional direction. In addition, Keith Newman's original play, called Breaking Up, is going to be given a public reading, uh, at the festival at Boston University, so just a, a note of, of congratulations to Sam, Jenna, and to Keith. Uh, secondly, the Elks Grand Lodge recently sponsored an essay contest calling upon students to write in response to a prompt called "What Freedom Means to Me." Uh, our very own Michaela Waldrop, a sixth grader at BB School, not only won the contest at the local and district level, uh, Michaela won the statewide competition and will be going on as the Massachusetts representative in the national contest, so special congratulations to Michaela. Uh, thirdly, I didn't have this on the list, but I'd also like to give some recognition to the gentleman who presented his guitar this evening. Um, and I didn't get to get his name. Um, is he, has he left us?
Justin Patterson.
Justin Patterson? Justin? I just, uh, that was quite an impressive piece of work, and I think that that deserves also a note of recognition this evening. Uh, another couple of notes. Uh, the Malden High School Concert Band received a first-ever bronze medal. The Malden High School Concert Band received a first ever bronze medal at the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association's Concert Band Festival last Friday, competing against the finest bands in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'd like to give special congratulations to conductor Matt Tavares and to every member of that concert band. And then finally, a sports note. Malden High School freshman Kiara Amos had a rather noteworthy debut last week when she pitched a no hitter against Lawrence High School in the softball team's first game of the season in Kiara's very first game as a high school student. So congratulations again to Kiara and best wishes for continued success. That's it for my student accomplishments for this month. Any questions?
Questions on that portion of the superintendent's report?
Okay, moving into the budget update. As is the case every month, we've attached the updated budget data for FY09 submitted by Ms. Oliver. Ms. Oliver's not with us this evening, but I can entertain any questions that folks might have about, about that, that data.
Any questions on the chart that has contained the spot of the superintendent's report? Mr. Duffy?
To the superintendent, the transfer that we have on tonight from Ms. Oliver regarding the transfer funds across cost centers, is this in regards to the projected expenses at the bottom of her pie chart?
It is.
So without this transfer, those funds are not covered?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Other question?
Okay, I'll move ahead. Presentation, yes? No other question? Okay, I'll move ahead with the presentation on the FY09.
I just had a question. It was a follow-up to what Mr. Duffy had said. On that transfer, is there any way to get from Mrs. Oliver? What amount is coming from each of those areas to go into the money that we're going to be transferring back?
The particular shortfalls in each of the areas?
Yep.
For example, homeless chances.
Yes, yep.
We can certainly do that.
All right, for the next meeting. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Okay, while our filter is being cleaned, I'll give you a little bit of a sense of the background in terms of the process we went through to develop the budget to this point in time. The development of the budget was a very inclusive process over the course of the last few months. I've been involved with each of the directors as well as each of the principals and have asked them to present to me the budget proposals that, that they have for each of their individual buildings. Once those budgets were collected, we met as a full team so that the, the principals as well as the assistant superintendents were engaged in ongoing conversations about the budget as a unified budget for the entire district. We wanted to make sure we knew the impact of all of the decisions or within the proposals on the part of individual schools, what the impact would also have across the district. And as a result of those meetings, we came up with the proposal I'm presenting to you this evening. One note is that this is a budget that is still in flux because as everybody knows, we've had recommendations or we've, the budget, the current budget condition on the federal level has resulted in our receiving some stimulus funds or over the course of the next month, getting clarity on stimulus funds that we will receive. In addition to that, there are additional funds that may come from the state and we have not gotten a final determination of what those funds will be. So the budget I present to you today is a proposal that remains in flux until we get some final figures on our federal stimulus dollars as well as the state recovery money. So in putting the budget together, we were committed to basically four ideals that we presented to you last year in last year's budget. We want to, are committed to sustaining high academic achievement for all students, committed to sustaining excellence in teaching, a strong community of learners, and the support services that enable high achievement. As I said before, these were four principles we put forward last year and the budget was constructed with the idea that we would sustain each of these. There were three priorities that went into place when we put the budget together. We also mulled these priorities over as a team. These were not just established by me, they were established by the principals, the directors, the assistant superintendents, and I working together. They are, first of all, class size. It was important for us to maintain class size, particularly in the core academic subjects in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and Social Studies K through 12. Secondly, in the area of curriculum instruction and assessment, it was important to us to maintain the momentum that we've established, not only over the course of the last year and a half since I've arrived in the district, but it certainly preceded me. Maintain our momentum, including our professional development work and our support and monitoring capacity in each and every classroom in the district. And then third priority had to do with the area of student support. We wanted to maintain our student support services, particularly in light of the increasing demand for these services as our economic condition worsens and as the issues our, our students struggle with become increasingly complex. As we know, Malden is an increasingly diverse city and we have an increasingly diverse student body. That doesn't just mean in the area of racial or ethnic diversity, it also has to do with the needs that our students present to us. We have an increasingly diverse population of students with IEPs who receive special education services. We also have an increasingly diverse group of students who come to us who, from different economic conditions. We have a huge influx of homeless students this year and all of our students bring to us a story and individual condition that requires us to respond to, to enable them to succeed inside classrooms. We want to sustain our ability to respond to those students. It's mentioned here as student support services. I would say that these are student support services, but they are equally teacher support services because students who come to classes who are not ready to learn because of the particular issues that they are dealing with are students that we need to serve so that we can enable them to, to learn as quickly and as readily as possible. The initial target in the budget was, which was presented to me by the mayor, was an overall reduction in city funds of one and a half million dollars. So that was our target in terms of putting together the budget that I'm presenting this evening. And I want to present the larger context of what that means. In addition, in this budget, we are, I will present to you new fiscal year costs for next year for fiscal year 2010. Those initial costs amount to almost $3 million. When you add the reduction target that was presented, the $1.5 million, it meant that we had to reduce current FY09, this year's expenditures, by a little over $4.2 million. That is the same, that dollar figure equals the 10% cut that was asked of us by the mayor a couple of months ago in terms of looking at our current expenditures. So I will itemize each of those dollar figures for you now. The reductions, I'll start with central. And I'm not going to read each one of these items, but I'm going to highlight a couple of them. You will see as you look down, down those figures, professional development and TRITech. That's one area I want to highlight because when I came to the district a year ago, about a year and a half ago, we were spending over $300,000 in out-of-district professional development costs. In other words, we were paying consultants to come to us and provide professional development. We are continuing to try to build our internal capacity to provide professional development to not have to pay folks outside of the district for those services. So we made cuts in that last year and we continue to make cuts in that this year to the tune of here, about $188,000, a little bit over that. And that again is in, in an effort to cut our costs outside and to sustain our professional development services inside. Another couple of items I want to mention up there, you'll see professional development day, three professional development days. We currently have built into a teacher's schedule, four days where they are working, but there are no students in the buildings. The first of those days is the day before the students arrive at the beginning of the school year. Three other days are professional development days where we provide professional development services to teachers throughout the district. I'm proposing that those three days not be included in next year's calendar to allow us, allow us to save $576,564. Next, a couple of lines I want to highlight, not necessarily for the content, but it's the first time you see these red figures. Anytime you see a red dollar figure, that represents a cost that we feel we can shift to Title I next year. We expect to receive stimulus funds from the federal government in two particular areas. One is Title I, the other is IDEA, which is in special education. Every time you see a red figure up here, it represents some Title I cost that are, I'm sorry, some costs that are currently assumed by the city, which we hope to shift to federal Title I next year to relieve the city of the burden of those costs. So in this case, if you look at academic coaches, we are, expect to, and I'm proposing to assume $228,455 of the $258,000 plus that is currently assumed by the budget, by the city, to shift those costs over to Title I. And you'll see Reading Street, which is a curriculum, it's our reading curriculum, our English Language Arts curriculum's grades, grades K to five. We owe $200,000 on that curriculum after this year. I'm proposing that we shift the cost of that from city funds over to Title I funds. I'll not itemize the rest of those other than to, that you will notice because there are two administrative cuts included in that. The last two items, one is the Director of Business and Entrepreneurship and the second cut is the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment. So the total reductions in central office adds up to the $1,672,161. That reduction is approximately equal to the same dollar figure as you'll see later that we're asking to be cut from, from the schools. Can you move to the next? Second area of reductions is in special education. Again, I'm not going to itemize, read each one of these, but I'd like to highlight a couple of them. This is the first area where you'll see cuts in teachers. I'll highlight each of the teacher cuts as I go through the budget. In this case, we are, I am proposing a cut of six special education teachers at a cost of $270,000. In terms of cuts, those positions will be cut. We currently have actually more than six teachers who are, who do not have professional status in the district. So in terms of the actual folks who would be cut from the district who have professional status, that would not impact anybody in the district with professional status. And then also, we have paraprofessionals. This is where the largest expenditure, reduction in cost for paraprofessionals resides and that's a cost of $420,000, $60,000 of which would be assumed by IDEA funds from the federal government. Those IDEA funds must be targeted towards special education services. As I said earlier, anytime you see a blue dollar figure, that represents money that we expect to shift to IDEA. The third administrator that I'm recommending in the cuts is the third item recommend, identified there, that's our special education individual management coordinator. That person currently provides services across the district to our IM programs. Our IM programs are those programs where our students who have, are behaviorally challenged are served in three of our K8 schools. Can you move beyond, please? Oh, one other I would just like to make note of is the alternative high school lease. If you see that, that $90,000 represents a shift of the alternative high school from an off-site location to an onsite location inside the high school. And that $90,000 covers the lease of that space that is currently occupied. Now I'm moving to reductions in the schools and I will read through these so that you understand each one of them for each school. At BB School, the, I'm recommending a cut of a consumer education teacher. You'll see that's a .5 position. The other half of that position is at Ferryway, if you look in the, in the second school. So it's a cut across those two schools of one consumer education teacher. In addition, at BB, we are proposing a cut of one health teacher, a half guidance counselor position, which would be covered by, I'm sorry, IDEA funds. So that would not represent an actual cut in the position. And three paraprofessionals in the kindergarten and those costs would be covered by Title I funds. That's why those funds are in red. So they would not be actual cuts, they would be covered by Title I. Whenever you see operations, those dollar figures refer to non-personnel costs, it could be instructional materials, something of that sort. At Ferryway, there's a cut in one instructional technology position, the other half of the consumer ed position I mentioned at, at BB, and two paraprofessionals, kindergarten paraprofessionals with their costs being assumed by Title I. At Forestale, a reduction in one instructional technology position, a halftime consumer ed and a halftime technical ed position. Those will show up, the other half of those will show up in the other schools that, as we move through the highlights. And a guidance counselor position of halftime, those dollar figures would be picked up by IDEA. At the Linden School, here are the other half of those, the consumer ed and technical ed positions I mentioned before. One physical education position, a halftime guidance counselor, which would be picked up by IDEA funds, a kindergarten paraprofessional, which would be picked up by Title I funds, and one paraprofessional in the office. At the Salemwood School, and we have it broken down by K4 and 5 through 8 because we have the two principals who were engaged in this process. At the K4 level, we would have one teacher of foreign languages and one drama teacher who would be cut. At the 5-8 level, we would have one technical education, one consumer education, and one guidance position cut. The guidance position would be covered by IDEA funds. Now again, I remind you that the IDEA and Title I funds, if you might ask, well, why aren't they covering some of these other positions? They are very prescribed funds. They can only cover in the, in the case of Title I, typically reading and mathematics services. And IDEA can only be, cover positions or other funds that are going to service students who have disabilities. Malden High School, the reduction at Malden High is a .8 foreign language teacher. You might wonder how we have a .8 position. We actually have two teachers who work part-time. They are each .4, so they work essentially a part-time position. Those two add up to a .8 position. The other cuts are one position in graphic arts, one position in carpentry, two positions in business, five paraprofessionals, and two clerk secretaries. You'll notice the school total is $1,649,898. That's approximately the same as I had mentioned before, we cut from central office for a total reduction from our FY09, from this year's cost of serving schools, central and special ed, a subtotal reduction of $4,240,490. and special ed, a subtotal reduction of $4,240,490. Now, the new costs that are included in this proposal are on this slide, and I need to itemize each of them for you. In terms of utilities, we project an increase of $827,295. A big part of that increase comes from the fact that last year we covered over $500,000, I should say this year, we covered over $500,000 in utilities costs with dollars which were carried over from the previous year's budget. We will have no carryforward funds to do the same next year. Excuse me. The next two items, longevity, have to do with contractual items that are included in both the clerical workers and the teachers' contract, and those are funds that we are obligated to carry forward. Same is the case for educational advancement for paraprofessionals and teachers. This has to do with the additional funds we would pay out next year, above and beyond this, funds that we pay out this year for any additional educational credits that teachers have received over the course of this year. The largest dollar figure there is the $1,052,646 for step increases. This is for all staff. As teachers move from year to year and they increase their year of service to the district, by one more year, these step increases are kicking in as a contractual obligation to all staff and teachers in the district. Out-of-district tuition, the budget that you have in your hands shows a little bit higher dollar figure than that, the ones that the school committee members have. That's because Friday and this weekend, I went through our out-of-district tuition costs and found areas where we in fact could make cuts or where we were going to receive funds from the state, which actually reduced the dollar figure you have, you have a dollar figure of a little, of over $800,000 there. We actually were able to pare that down to $649,209. Those, as you know, are the tuition costs for any of our students who leave the district to be served through Special Education Services outside of the district. The substitute teacher system is the cost that we would assume to automate our substitute teacher system so that all of our substitutes would be assigned through an online system, and all of our attendance of not only substitutes, but all teachers would be now managed through an online system. That is the cost of that online system for a year. It has also allowed us to reduce by one clerical position in Central Office. The Assessment System is a cost that would be assumed, an annual cost, to put in an Assessment System in the district. We currently have the Assessment System, but we do not have, it is not managed well through an online service or through an automated service. So we are spending an enormous amount of people hours to manage that system on the directors, on the part of teachers. It's very inefficient, the way we are doing it now, so we, I am proposing that we automate all of those services so teachers can teach and directors can direct and not spend so much of their time pushing paper and managing the administration, the scoring of our current in-district Assessment System. And the Student Information System, that's an annual cost to upgrade our Student Information System, which covers all data that relates to students as well as our faculty. This includes everything from attendance to discipline data, to SIMS data that we submit to the state on our student enrollment, to EPMs data that we submit to the state on our teachers. It covers, it includes cafeteria data, it includes the whole array of data that we gather for students or teachers. We need to upgrade that. We, again, are running a very inefficient system right now. We have a lot of administrators and teachers spending a lot of time on things like attendance and cut slips and suspensions, and a lot of cafeteria workers spending a lot of time moving paper along, that has to do with students and the free and reduced lunch. We have a lot of paper that moves in Special Education in terms of IEPs that needs to be automated or shifted to a more efficient system. That's what the cost of this system would be, and that's a proposal in for next year. And that's the figure I gave you earlier on the new cost that would be assumed by city funds of $2,740,490. So again, I'm returning to that previous slide. If you look at the reductions, which I itemized, which are in the left column on the paper sheets that the school committee members have, but the reduction in Central Special Education and School costs, that's the first line, minus the new costs that I said we need to assume for FY10, that results in the net reduction we were targeting of $1.5 I would like to at least give you some more information about the stimulus funds and what we project to receive. The new stimulus funds are in Title I and IDEA. We have yet to receive a firm figure on Title I. We have received a figure for IDEA, which is $1,105,614. The actual dollar figure we received is twice that. You'll notice, that's why I have times 2 after IDEA. But it's twice that, so it's $2,211,000, a little bit over that. But that's to be spent over the course of the next two fiscal years, so for FY10 and FY11. So for our purposes, our budgeting purposes, we cut those figures in half for this year alone. So that Title I figure of $656,500, that's a projected figure, that's not a final one that we've received. But again, the dollar figure we receive will actually be about $1.3 million, but that's to be spent over the next two years. So for the purpose of constructing the budget for next year, I halved that, and that's where that $656,500 figure came from. These are our current projections for Title I for next year, assuming that we receive these dollars, and I'm not actually making that assumption, but if we receive. The Title I figure that we did get is very, very close to the Title I figure that was projected initially, so I'm tentatively operating with that assumption in mind. As I mentioned before, as I went through the Central and School budgets, these are the same Title I costs that I mentioned there, the academic coaches, the kindergarten paras. In addition to that, we have to pay benefits to all of those folks, so that's where that third line is. That's a standard percentage that we have to pay for benefits, health and welfare, retirement, unemployment, things, items of that sort. Excuse me. In addition, this summer, we are running two literacy institutes in the district, and the $7,500 is the cost to cover those. I had mentioned earlier, the Reading Street curriculum, the $200,000 we would use Title I funds to pay for. And then grant management, that 4% is a standard percentage. That covers the overhead of managing the grant. These grants, the IDEA and the Title I grants, are going to come with an unprecedented level of scrutiny in terms of the amount of dollars we're spending, where we're spending them, how we're spending them. And that grant management, that 4% is designed to make sure that we don't do anything improperly and we count for every single penny properly. Before I go to IDEA, I forgot to mention before I got into this, is that we have been, the guidelines we have been given by the state, which have come through the federal government, is that at most, at most, we should devote 50% of these funds to personnel to try to cover personnel costs, cuts that we may have in the district. It's important to remember, these funds are essentially grant funds. They go away, they go away in a short period of time. They go away after two years for sure. So we cannot obligate the city to a lot of, to a lot of staff costs which will continue past FY11. So if we do, then we start playing a game of pay now or pay later. At the same time, as much as that's in our interest, it is a guideline on the part of the federal government and the state government, that we do not spend more than 50% on personnel, and it's actually their desire that we spend a great deal less than 50% on personnel. Again, because these dollars will run out in short order. In terms of IDEA, this is a much more solid figure that we've received, and the items that are in the proposal that we hope to pay for are as follows. A Transition Counselor at the high school. We've been cited by the New England Schools and Colleges as being dreadfully low on the counseling services that we provide to students in the high school. This counselor would be targeting services particularly to Special Education students and to students who are at risk of not graduating from high school. This will get us closer to the numbers that the NEASC, New England Association of Schools and Colleges, expects the high school to be at. We won't actually reach that number, but it will get us closer. The Guidance Counselor figures are the same figures that I pointed out as I ran through the individual schools. This is to restore those positions. IDEA allows for that as long as this percentage of guidance services are in fact provided to students with disabilities, which we will certainly do. The paraprofessionals are the same paraprofessionals I identified in the Central cuts that would be restored through IDEA. The Teacher Leader at the high school, we mentioned that we had six cuts in Special Education teachers. We cannot continue to run the Special Education program with just those six cuts being put into place. We are proposing a pretty dramatic reorganization of Special Education Services at the high school, or starting particularly at the high school, where in fact, we are going to offer a stronger support program. We currently have a number of classrooms, Special Education classrooms, that have two teachers in those classrooms, in an inclusion model. We are finding that those services are not getting us the best bang for the buck. We want to continue to provide services to teachers inside those classes, but we want to target them very particularly in reading and mathematics, and we are going to do that by converting some of our Special Education positions in the high school to what we call Consulting Teacher Positions, where those teachers, instead of being with a single teacher or in a classroom over the course of the whole day, will be targeting their services to be in those classrooms, particularly in English Language Arts and Mathematics, where highly specialized support is required in reading and in mathematics because of the particular disabilities our students have. The Teacher Leader would be the person who is coordinating all of those services and providing the training not only to the consulting teachers, but to the teachers, so that we can make sure and is supporting them in identifying appropriate accommodations, making appropriate modifications, so that the best services can be provided to our Special Education students despite the cut in the total number of teachers who will be providing those services. The Teacher Interns is also, this is targeted at the high school, where we are going to provide, in addition, I mentioned before, we're not going to have full-time teachers in these classes, in these inclusion classes, but we will have some Teacher Interns who we will place in four of the classes or rotate them among classes, again, to make sure that even though we have a cut in the total number of teachers, we are providing strategic support to the kids who need the reading and the math support, when and where it is needed. The Team Chairperson, that is, we currently do not have a Team Chairperson at the Early Learning Center. This is someone who manages all of the caseload of the students with IEPs at the Early Learning Center. It is a need that we have, we are experiencing difficulties in terms of providing sufficient support services to the students with special needs at the ELC. We are also experiencing that problem at the high school, so we intend to, are proposing to put in a position through IDEA money to cover both the ELC halftime and to fill in the services at the high school. The benefits are, as I said before, calculated on the 18% standard rate. In addition, the other cost that I want to just explain to you, the Early Assessment Program has to do with providing better services to our students who are coming into the district with IEPs or needing IEPs. These are students who are newly registering, either coming in as kindergarten students or as transfers, as well as our students who are coming in as limited English proficient, English Language learners. We continue to find that these students, two, three, four months into their service in the schools, have been misplaced and we need to go through a replacement process, which is very costly in terms of the fact that those kids have not gotten the services that we should have been providing initially, also the reprogramming. It's, it is a cost that far exceeds the $60,000 that we're hoping to bring into the district to make sure that we have a better assessment system for all of those students when they enter, that they get the proper screening for special, for special needs, as well as English Language assessments to get them placed in the proper program. Professional development has to do with costs that we need to assume for any of our Special Education teachers and our regular education teachers who wish to get more and deeper education in reading and mathematics. It is an area on the high school level we are in critical need. As strange as it may sound, is that Special Education teachers currently come to service without having targeted instruction at the graduate level or undergraduate level in reading or mathematics intervention. Unfortunately, that kind of training is shifted onto districts, whether it's in the Commonwealth or it's in any district in the Commonwealth. So we have teachers who are coming in, who are working, who have certification and need to work with our kids who have the greatest disabilities in reading and mathematics, and frankly, they do not have the proper preparation to do that as well as we need them to do it. That professional development cost that's mentioned there is our contribution to make sure that those folks get that service. On Thursday of this week, I'm meeting with Salem State to see if we can start an onsite certification program for any teacher who would like to get certification in reading and mathematics, and particularly our Special Education teachers. That dollar figure would in fact help us to support that program if it were to come to pass. The intervention programs, the assistive technology, I want to put those two together. Again, speaking to our kids who are in greatest need, whether they are students who have IEPs or they don't have an IEP but they are not reading or doing mathematics at a level that we need them to in order to be successful in the regular program. These dollars are designed as our investment dollars, again, going back to the idea that the IDEA money, and at least half of it needs to be invested in infrastructure or professional development that will increase our capacity so that after those dollars are gone, we will still have that increased capacity, but we won't have to continue to pay for it. These two line items talk about the technology that we need to bring into the district and the programs we need to bring into the district to serve our most needy kids a lot better than we are currently serving them. The Student Information System is, I had mentioned that earlier, and the additional cost assumed by the city, that's the startup cost where we convert all of our current data into this Student Information System and get it online. That's an initial investment to get that online, and then the grant management. And then you'll notice the dollars, the $1,105,614 equals our projected dollars that we will receive from IDEA next year. So I want to give you the overall reductions, the staff reductions, as we add them up over the entire document that you've looked at and all of these slides. Total reduction before stimulus money is administrators, three, teachers, 21.8, paraprofessionals, 33, clerks and clerk secretaries, 3.5, for a total of 61.3. There are reductions in teachers down, I'm sorry, in paraprofessionals in particular, from 33 to 24, which reduces the total, with the stimulus money, which reduces the total reductions in staff to 52.3 staff members. And the bottom line, as we look at this district, there's no real good news in this package. None of us are pleased to any extent whatsoever that we have to endure these costs, that's obvious. But what we tried to do in terms of putting this budget together is to make sure that we sustain what we have done and what we have achieved over the last, and I would say five to seven years, because it really does go back that long. And we have been committed to putting together a budget, again, that will sustain the high academic achievement for all students that we can point to. the high academic achievement for all students that we can point to, the excellence in teaching which we are increasingly building from year to year, sustain a strong community of learners across all schools and all teachers and students, and continue to sustain the support services that enable the high achievement that we all want and need for all of our kids and to improve also, to continue to improve despite the losses that I've mentioned this evening. I am absolutely totally committed to and confident that we will continue to improve. As much as it breaks all of our hearts to put, have to put a budget together like this one, it's my belief that it is the best budget that we could put together given the constraints that we have facing us. And that's it for my presentation. I'd be happy to entertain questions.
Thank you. To the superintendent, you want to entertain them from there or do you want to come back?
Um, I can, I can come back.
Questions of the superintendent on the budget presentation. A note before we open up the questioning, this is the superintendent's plus central office and principals, directors take on the budget with the financial constraints that we find ourselves within. Okay. School committee has yet to deliberate on these proposals. Both members Crowe and Ultrino will hold a series of budget subcommittee meetings. One has already been held and several more are scheduled over the coming weeks, one tomorrow for those that are interested at the Ferryway School at 5:30. And then there will be others after that as well. So keeping that in mind as part of the presentation as well, take some questions. First light I see is on the left. Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the superintendent for his presentation. It's not pleasing to the eye really when you see some of these proposed cuts, but I do have a couple of questions regarding the tech education. We have a cut in, a proposed cut in the, let's see, the carpentry, graphic arts. How many teachers do we have if we're cutting one in each of those departments?
That is the single graphic arts teacher and the single carpentry teacher that we have. We still have the automotive teacher, but entirely different certification, different department.
Okay. So if we're cutting, so basically it's not like we have two teachers in that, those classrooms and we're just cutting one of the positions, we're cutting the complete?
We're cutting the program.
The program?
The graphic arts teacher currently teaches a mixed program of fine arts and graphic arts and so we, so we would also be cutting a little bit into the fine arts.
Okay. And the carpentry and woodworking, that is only one teacher also?
That is the single, the single teacher that we have in, in that area.
The purpose of that, is it because of the financial implications or savings that we may have or is it the programs?
No, I would, I would say all of these cuts have to do with the, the decision where we had to make cuts in, in terms of the, the dollar figure that we had to reach and the commitment that we had, you know, particularly to try to ma, to maintain class size, current class size in English Language Arts, Math, Science and, and History. In addition, I might add is that, you know, over the course of the renovation of the high school, we will have and anticipate having the capacity to create some more vocational opportunities as that renovation takes place. We have looked at an engine, pre-engineering program, we've looked at a biomedical program and have looked at a culinary arts program. In the interim, we do, we don't have the capacity to get any of those up, up and running. We don't have the facility to do it. So we had to at this point in time make a decision when it came down to it where we could make a cut and, or where we, and it was at that point driven largely by dollars and cents.
Okay. Well, with the concern with the community that came forward today, I think we need to take another look at it moving forward. I know you're, you're cut, you're cut between the rock and the hard place right now, but that's my concern and I've always been interested and I've always supported all the, the tech educational programs. My other question, another line item, the alternative high school, I know we're going to be saving $90,000 on the lease and you're stating that it's going to come, become onsite location. What onsite, onsite location are we referring to?
You mean exactly where would it be?
Yeah, where, are we, do we have a location, onsite location where it's going to be or is it just a speculation or we're working on?
Again, I get my, no, we have a site, but I get my ABCDs, you know, in terms of the, the buildings. It's in the back of, in, in the back of the building. I don't have the exact room number right now, again, because, you know, largely because of the renovations. I can get that number for you. I can get you that room.
But more directly to the question, onsite at Malden High School?
Yes.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, onsite at Malden.
Okay. Now, I do recall years past that there was a question of having it onsite. That question no longer exists?
Well, we had a lot of discussions about it. We think that there are pros and cons about it being inside Malden High School and there are pros and cons about it being outside. And we weighed those, weighed the financial implications and decided that it, that it, they balanced themselves out enough that we could assume the move of the program into the high school. A big piece of that also had to do with stabilizing the staff. We have a staff now in the alternative high school that we think is a very, very strong staff that is providing good services to the kids and that makes a big difference in our being able to even consider this as a, as a possibility.
What is the student population at the alternative high school?
Right now, it has ranged from 12 to about 18 right now that are, that are in the high school and I think we have two kids who may be moving in, so we might get as high as 20.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All set, Ms. Rivera Rogers? Thank you. Mr. Fröll?
I just, I just, I don't have a question. I'd just like to make a statement. I think it's important that we keep the sharps at Malden High School. As you saw tonight, there's a large, large amount of students that have got, are getting a benefit out of it or have gotten benefit out of it. I understand, I mean, some people think everyone is going to college. I have nothing against college. My three, my two daughters and my son all graduated from college, but somebody has to understand that there is, everybody doesn't go to college. There are, there's a certain segment of the population that isn't, not into academics. They like to work with their hands and, I mean, that's the way it is. So I, I would just like to say that, um, think, think before you shut out the sharps. And you mentioned pre-engineering and biotech sharps. Those sharps aren't going to benefit kids that aren't going to, those are for college, kids that are going to college. We just throw the other kids by the wayside if we don't provide them with, with some sharps, hands-on sharps where they can make things and, and learn to, a way to make a living. Actually, they learn how to live and how to make a living when they're working, when they're in a vocational shop. So I, I hope you think a little bit about that. Thank you.
If I could, I definitely want, I do definitely want to respond to that. A great deal of thought not only has gone into this, but will continue to go into this. And I appreciate not only your comment, but the comments that were made by every single person who stood up this evening. One footnote though on that, in terms of the biotech, because I personally met with a representative, I can't remember the gentleman's name right now from Brigham and Women's Hospital about this. And the, and the biotech was targeted in particular because of the feedback we got saying that they, that Brigham and Women's and a number of the hospitals have biotech training programs that any student from high school who got some pre-biotech training could move into, in the hospitals as a training program at the hospital without any college whatsoever. And so that was a particular item that we were targeting because we felt that it would provide students with real solid job opportunities particularly in, in this area because of all of our hospitals right out of high school. And it would give our kids a leg up because the feedback was with some initial biotech training, they would have a leg up on applicants who were coming to the hospital without any biotech training.
But we, we have, we have two viable trades at Malden High School, carpentry and automotive. Why are we just going to throw those, them, those out, sharps by the wayside to bring two new ones in?
Well, again, I, I, I want to say I am taking to heart everything that has been said about, no, we're not throwing, you know, automotive is not being proposed to be cut, but I, I'm taking to heart everything that's being said about carpentry today, whether or not we go forward with biotech. It's a point that, again, I need, we need to continue to consider in our deliberations. And I'm just saying that I hope folks believe that they have been heard this evening.
All right. Now you say about automotive. Now, maybe this, next year automotive is going to be there, but when, as I look at the plans, I don't see any renovations being done in the auto shop or in the wood shop. So that's what leads me to believe that somebody's not planning for them to be there.
There is absolutely no plans, no discussion whatsoever that's taken place about the auto, automotive shop not being there and that space is being renovated, much as the other spaces in the building are being renovated. I can't say that the actual equipment is being addressed, you know, the upgrading of the equipment per se, but we are renovating it in the same way that all of the classrooms in the building are being renovated.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fröll. Stand the left-hand side. Mr. Winslow.
Yes, I, one of the things that attracted my family to Malden was the opportunity for one of my daughters to go to the vocational school. That was the Volk's School and the Culinary Arts Program, but it is something that I do very much understand that, that having opportunities for kids other than a college track is important. I mean, one of the things I do think that strategically we, we should think of where the vocational programs are going in the long run, that they have been sort of dwindling, but I, I think it is very important as we see is this great expression of public support for the programs are is that there is a need and desire in the community to have these programs. And I think we have to think of, you know, can we get the carpentry unions involved? And I know in Malden, there's also something called the Industrial Aid Society that has money involved. Is there a way, can we bring the hospitals in to offer programs after school or the community colleges? Maybe think strategically so that these programs are offered, but we also offer, you know, high academic excellence. So I think some of it is to really think of, you know, are there innovative ways to offer these programs either on budget or off budget is, is a way to think of things. So, so I think that's something we should do and, and certainly, you know, we have to look at that, you know, going forward. Just add a question, some more questions on certain things on the TRITech program. I just had a question about what the, you know, I know that's a program that we've jointly funded with Medford and Everett. What is the status of that program overall with the other school districts? Do we have any sense? I mean, is this kind of winding it down or?
Well, TRITech is submitting a new proposal for the same program. It's the American History Program, federal government. That, that program did wind down the funding for it, but they've applied for a new, a new grant and we are currently still a participant in their grant.
So if that, they do get another grant, then we would be able to fund that through another grant?
We will still participate.
There's 10 athletic coach positions being eliminated. Is that all at the high school then?
It is, and those are largely consolidation of freshman and JV teams.
Okay. On utilities, that is a very significant increase. I know that in the last year's budget, we did build in some significant increases. Energy prices have somewhat moderated. Are we still, what sort of assumptions are being built into those? I know you said we did sort of have a $500,000 we were able to spend out of last year's budget, but we're still having a $300,000 increase here.
Right, right. And, and I think 189,000 of that increase was incurred this year and the balance of it is a projected, just our projection, if, if the costs were to continue to increase the next year.
So that's, that's it.
So you've gotten the $500,000 which was carried forward, about $189,000 of new costs this year because of the increase, particularly in the fall and early winter. We carried forward that same percentage in case something similar to that happened next year. One thing I might add though is that, and this has not come to committee yet, but we've got a, an energy proposal that is out there to reduce the costs in each of our buildings through a variety of, of measures. This cost hopefully will go down next year because of those cost-saving measures, but because they're not currently in place. We use the same percentage of, of growth this year to project growth in costs for next year.
Yeah, I mean, I know, I think if people saw on the Globe yesterday, there, there is $500,000 coming to the city in this energy efficiency block grant that, you know, I'm sure the mayor is probably starting to look at. Perhaps some of that could go into funding that program. So that'd be something that we could look at and perhaps we could save some things there. Let me see where else. I had a question on the Salemwood five through eight budget. I noticed in all the other school budgets, there wasn't a reduction in operation costs at Salemwood for five to eight, there was not. I mean, is that because that's rolled into the K through four operations reductions or was there a conscious choice not to reduce operations?
Actually, it was a decision on the part of the principal that this would be the best way to make cuts within the building. And you'll notice because the guidance counselor, the projection is at that entire position would be restored, the cuts are relatively, you know, much lower, so she wouldn't have to, you know, dip into the operations budget. But that was largely the decision by the principal.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Winslow. Ms. Angeles.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also have a few questions. We were speaking about the tech classes and one of my questions is about students that have IEPs that are written in their IEPs for tech classes. How do we, how will we handle that if that comes up?
Well, if, if the technology class is included in their IEP, then we have to find, you know, services for that student. We did a review of the IEPs with this in mind to find out whether or not we would have a, you know, a negative impact in terms of if we made this cut and whether we would assume substantial other cuts. I can't, I was really just asking for the dollar figure impact and I got a no impact on that. So, but clearly if there are stipulations in an IEP, we need to provide services, we need to provide services.
Okay. One more. Where did I go? Oh, with the alternative high school, with the renovations happening, will they be having to move their classroom as well as the rest of the classrooms in the school as renovations move into that area or will they be stationary?
Right. They, they, no, they, they would be in an area this coming year that would be renovated two years hence and then there would need to be a move. And then they would move into a area that has been renovated.
And that, and that's someplace where they'd stay for the?
So that they could stay there.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Ms. Angeles. Doc Angelo, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Mr. Hivino.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Smith, I'm glad that, you know, you're open to discussion on the tech ed budget, especially that that piece is concerning. I'm sure it was worrisome to you as was the whole budget when you put the items together, but just at a rough count, it looks as though we're somewhere in the neighborhood of $692,000 plus out of the 1.5, 504,000 that was cut from the operations budget though. We really need to look at that. I'm very concerned about that. The arguments and the discussions tonight, I know that you heard them, we all heard them, they were very cogent. And as much as we want academic excellence, and we do need academic excellence, I don't think that having, if we're going to call ourselves a comprehensive high school, we have to have all the components of that comprehensive high school included. And I'm sure there are areas. And I'm sure there are areas I will, for one, will start looking line by line to see what, where we can cut to ameliorate some of the devastation in that particular department. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avino. Ms. Crowe. Student representative.
I have a few questions. In regards to the business teachers being cut at Malden High School, is that going to be a cut from the entrepreneur teacher also?
No, that particular class would remain in the curriculum.
Okay. I don't know, I think that if we can somehow find a way to keep at least one of the business teachers. I know so many of my friends have gone on field trips, and the business teachers go out of their way to focus on different field trips and opportunities for the students. They go to New York City, and they sell different things that they buy there in the cafeteria. And it's a really valued subject in Malden High School. I'd say teachers are really valued there in addition to tech ed. Also, for the 10 coaches that are going to be cut, how are you, how is it going to be determined which sport is going to be cut from which? I've heard some speculation that maybe field hockey will be cut?
No, field hockey is not going to be cut.
Okay.
But that determination was made by the athletic director, and it's largely, the sports wouldn't be cut, but we'd consolidate freshman teams and junior varsity teams. So the goal was to maintain all of the sports, and field hockey is not going to be cut. But also, this doesn't, the business cuts is not eliminating all of our business teachers. You know, we still have, if I remember correctly, three business teachers who will be there. So the entrepreneurship and the kinds of programs, excuse me, that you just mentioned, they would remain in the curriculum.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott. To the right, Ms. Crowe. Chair doesn't have any questions, but I have some notations. Very, very difficult budgets every year. In my estimation, what I have given the superintendent a target to shoot for is the very, very best-case scenario. And the economic conditions and financial climate in the state of Massachusetts is only getting worse. So things could change, and they could change between now and the time that the school committee sets this budget. It could be changing afterwards. And my expectation is it potentially would change for the negative, not for the positive. Should note, in this budget alone, there are at least, almost, at least, but not quite, $575,000, almost $600,000 of negotiated changes that have to be put in place with various unions. If those negotiations are not successful, then that means there are at least, under the proposed budget, another $600,000 in deductions that have to be made from a variety of programs across the spectrum other than what's been identified tonight. So, and I know the school committee will do its due diligence. There's a range of priorities. We understand that we're trying to do the best, good for the best, for the highest number of students within the system. In the current economic climate, in the end, something will have to give. There'll have to be some sacrifice, even if it is temporary. And, you know, we all hope that the Commonwealth, together with the Malden Public Schools, together with the City of Malden, ends up enjoying a better financial climate in the outlying fiscal years. But for this year that is upon us as of July 1st, you know, we should keep in mind that it's a best-case scenario that we see here tonight. And the best-case scenario assumes accepted negotiated changes of over $575,000. I don't envy the co-chairs of the Budget Subcommittee, but I do invite all members of the public that have a concern or an opinion, that they weigh in with Mr. Altreno and Ms. Crowe over the coming weeks so that at least we can have as many voices heard from as possible. But I don't think this body is going to be able to do all things for all people, at least not in this coming school calendar year. So I thank the superintendent and the entire staff for the effort put into the document. I believe it's a very good, comprehensive start. We hope that it gets shaped over the coming months so that as many issues as humanly possible get addressed and satisfied within the budgetary framework. Not seeing any other questions. We'll consider the presentation on the budget to be closed and move on to the consent agenda, item number five, is a request to transfer surplus funds. We've had some questions on it already. We have Ms. Oliver's memorandum in the file here. We can take the appropriate motion on it, or we can take additional questions.
Questions?
Ms. Altreno.
Regarding the transfer of funds, Mr. Smith, there's zero way we can get to the Budget Subcommittee at some point how we had excess money in salaries and how much we're looking to transfer into these. I know these accounts have to be paid. We didn't, you know, we couldn't foresee the homeless transportation going up drastically, et cetera, et cetera. But to make such a large transfer of funds from a line item that we had in quote "excess of", which happens for retirements and shifts and stuff. If it's not a problem with the financial piece of it, we'd like to at least look at it, the Subcommittee, before with the absence of our business manager tonight. These questions may not be answered at this point, so I'd feel a little uneasy approving that, if that's okay.
No, that's fine. I mean, and as I said earlier, I'll get all of these items itemized both from the, on both sides of the ledger.
Please.
So proposing to table the request?
That's my...
Second? On the tabling? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So table. I'm also informed that there are three policies that were, I believe, late additions to the packet. Hopefully, we've all had a chance to review them, and we can hear from Ms. Rivera Rogers, who chairs the Policy Subcommittee on those proposals, and take any questions. Ms. Rivera Rogers.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry, still not, cut the wrong one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
The Policy Subcommittee has met several times this, well, a couple of times this month, the past two months. And Karen Reynolds had sent to the Policy Subcommittee three policies to be reviewed. These policies were sent to the committee as a whole over the weekend. I don't know if all have had an opportunity to review them for consideration for a vote this evening, or I would take into consideration to table it to the next meeting to vote on it. It's very important that we vote on these policies, which consist of the suicide prevention policy, the pregnancy policy, date rape and statutory rape policy. So that way, they can be put in our policy manuals, and the administration and the teachers know what type of protocol to follow once these situations or incidents may occur within our district. So maybe...
So a point of information?
Point of information and for consideration for a vote at our next meeting.
Well, I have a point of information.
And you have a point of information.
So the Policy Subcommittee has not passed upon these?
We have passed upon them, but I am looking at some of the committee members as a whole, that they have not, have had enough opportunity to review it. There is one change that is going to be made in the suicide prevention policy, and it's just basically being edited. The Department of Family and Children's Services is being, Department of Social Services is being replaced by the Department of Family and Children's Services.
So the Subcommittee, Subcommittee is recommending them with those changes, but you're giving the larger membership the opportunity to take it all in for the next meeting?
To review, correct.
Any pleasure, Mr. Altreno?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm not sure if it's the proper protocol, whether I'm on the budget, I mean, the Policy Subcommittee, we're fine with it, but I'm not sure if it needs to be on the agenda for the public on the next meeting, which is the 27th or so, that it will be voted on by then. I'm not sure if that's the proper policy or not, but there were no changes to what was in the packet. It's just not sure if it has to be posted for 48 hours that we are voting on a policy that was just voted on about two hours ago.
Well, Chair does have a comment on this.
Okay.
But we'll take that.
Well, what happened, as a matter of fact, point of information, is that it was supposed to be put on the agenda. It happened to just slip by, miscommunication. But being that said, if there is a problem, that's why I'm stating, you know, talking to the committee as a whole, if we do have a problem, if the Chair has a problem with that, we can table it till the next meeting. And it'll be a point of...
Well, I would trust the judgment of the members of the Policy Committee, and I would be inclined to follow their recommendation. I do note that it is, these are not your standard policies. These are policies on very, very important topics that parents should be particularly aware of, that the committee is considering accepting and endorsing. So I do think that waiting a period of time and somehow getting out some public information upon the fact that the committee is taking it up. And just while we have the opportunity to do that, these are on, to repeat, and I know it's been said before, but it's on suicide prevention, and the date rape, statutory date rape policy. So those are serious topics. I think it is good judgment to wait until the next meeting and give the public, if there is under public comment, an opportunity to come down and address the committee on it, and have the Policy Committee do any other further outreach it thinks is necessary to have them pass with some feedback.
And if parents, well, then if parents are hearing this and would like the additional information regarding the policies that will be brought forth, more than happy to reach out to the School Department Central Office to receive the copies in advance. So, or contact one of us school committee members, and you can get a copy of these so-called policies to review prior to the vote at our next school committee meeting.
So on the motion of Ms. Rivera Rogers to table and to take the topics up at the next meeting? Seconded, all in favor on the table?
Aye.
Any polls?
Thank you.
So table. Thank you, Ms. Rivera Rogers. Take with?
Yes.
Question?
Yeah, I just have a question on something that was forwarded. It was a list of grants that was sent to the members, and I just had a question about the, an explanation of what is meant by the list. I don't know, should I follow up with Irene, or?
I get rejected.
Mr. Altreno. Mr. Avino.
I'm the good-looking guy. No, I had requested that particular piece of information, just as a piece of information, to see what grants we had, total number, total dollar figure.
And my one other question was, there's something called the type is undistributed, special ed, and regular day. I didn't know what the distinction of those types were. Do you want to, want to take a look at this?
Mr. Smith, would you have any comments on it? I'm tracking down.
Okay, can you repeat which item are you looking at?
At the column on the far right. It talks about being undistributed, regular sped. I just didn't know what it meant by being undistributed.
Well, my understanding, to be honest with you, I've not used the word "undistributed" before, but looking at these, it appears to me that these are, in other words, they are not targeted funds. Well, but 2A is, so I need to, I need to check in that. I mean, I used that term before, so I'm not sure. Either of you familiar with that term, "undistributed"?
No, not at all.
Okay, okay. So I need to check out, I really do. Thank you.
Perhaps we could have Ms. Oliver?
At the next meeting.
At the next meeting.
An explanation on the list.
Yes.
So it's for informational purposes?
Exactly.
Any other questions or comments? Otherwise, we could take some notes of personal privilege, if you have any. We can start on the right. Ms. Crowe?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, we just want to, again, say that tomorrow at 5:30 at the Ferryway School, we'll have a Budget Subcommittee meeting. And then the week after, at the BB, thank you. On April 13th, we'll have another Budget Subcommittee meeting at 5:30, but we encourage people to come down and listen to the presentation and give us your feedback. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crowe. Mr. Altreno?
Thank you. Just a point of personal privilege, on Saturday, May 9th, St. Rocco Society, which has given about $40,000 in scholarships the last couple of years, is celebrating in its 80th year in Malden. And we're having a banquet that Saturday night, 6 o'clock at Anthony's. For more information, contact me. And mark your calendars for August 7th, 8th, and 9th, which is our 80th anniversary feast. So, thank you.
Thank you. Since we won't be meeting again until after the event, I just wanted to remind everyone out there that April 18th is Healthy Kids Day. Healthy Malden, the Malden Quanis and the Malden YMCA are putting on a day-long event from 10 to 4 at the Malden YMCA with free parking at the Dartman Street Lot. This is the annual bike helmet giveaway, but we'll be doing a whole lot around bikes, child safety, fingerprinting, as well as every summer program in the city there to give out information and do signups. So please come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Mr. Avino.
Yeah, just like to wish our staff and our students and teachers and their families a very happy Easter and a holy past over season.
Thank you. The far right, Mr. Freud?
I'd like to just thank all the people that came out tonight to express themselves on the cuts. And hopefully, when Malden speaks, the school committee will listen.
Thank you, Mr. Freud. Ms. Rivera Rogers. All set?